This meeting of the Stratford Town Council, October 10th, 2017. We're going to start with a prayer and pledge allegiance. This week it is, this month it is the, Scott Farrington Posner has the opportunity to do this.
In the wake of recent tragedies, I would just like for everybody to take a moment of silence and just reflect on being kind, caring for other people, not engaging in any kind of violent behavior, and, and spreading just love around, you know, your town, your community, your neighbors, and hoping that, you know, the times that we are in start changing and people can just try to focus on being kind and good citizens and caring for their neighbor. So a moment of silence would be great, thank you.
It is called cerem- ceremony, I'm sorry. Next section of our agenda is the approval of minutes. I always skip it. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
From the regularly scheduled meeting in public forum of September 11th and special meeting of September 20th, 2017?
So moved.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Farrington Posner, seconded by Mr. Chase. Discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion passes 10 to zero. The next section is the ceremonial presentations and awards. Tonight we would like to take the opportunity to provide, to have an acknowledgement, a big thank you to one of the members of our community who had an idea over a year ago, acted on that idea, and gave all of us the opportunity to enjoy the arts. So I will let the mayor and I make that presentation.
Why don't we go down to the floor and I'd ask Neil Sherman to come up. Neil, why don't you step forward? First of all, I've known Neil Sherman for a number of years on the Economic Development Commission, and all I want to do is say thank you for all the hard work you've done. You've been a part of the mayor, you've been involved forever. But it takes the efforts of somebody to actually take the bow by the horns and do something that doesn't benefit themselves, with the community, and I know you've done it a number of times, but it's important that we do this. I know Chairwoman Beth DePonte also wants to acknowledge you, and Beth, I think we should share this, in the sense that although it's a citation from the mayor's office, I'd like you to read the citation from the record, so why don't you?
Neil, what you did is a wonderful example of a public partnership with the generosity in Mr. Vincent Chase on the parking lot. But you had an idea about bringing the arts to Stratford and producing what you called the downtown market. I think it's the town's only jury art show at this point, and so this is really a moving forward. So it says, "Be known that the town of Stratford does hereby honor Neil Sherman in recognition of his service and dedication to the Stratford community, and on his efforts to head a volunteer committee of market professionals in bringing more than 50 unique vendors to Stratford to produce the downtown market in Colonial Square, creating a unique shopping destination and producing a successful event." Thank you very much, Neil. The next section of the agenda is communications bills, petitions, remonstrances. None that I know of. The next section is mayor's report, committee reports, and town attorney's report. We'll start with you, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, you skipped number three.
Did I, I'm sorry, did I skip? I'm sorry.
We can only wish.
Number three is council members' response to comments from public forum. Mr. Farrington Posner, we'll start with you.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for coming out this evening. So, the first thing I'm going to address right off the bat, let's address the elephant in the room here. And I've lost 30 pounds, so it's, but it's still me. Yes, I decided to resign, I will not resign, but I decided to not run again for town council. It was a personal decision of mine. What I do want to put to rest is all the rumors, so just so you all know, I have not been threatened by the mafia to run. I was not arrested in New Haven for massage prostitution, which is out there. I am not dying of cancer and I'm not dying of AIDS. I have neither. So let's just put that all to rest right now. You know, there's just a lot of nasty rumors out there of why I've left. I've decided to leave to focus on my family and my career. This was not something that I had intended to do two years ago. I spoke up as a community advocate to, to protect my neighborhood and represent my neighborhood. I ended up deciding to run for the zoning commission because I didn't like what was happening on the zoning commission. I was only there for a short time because when Councilman Dumas stepped down, there was an opening, and, and people felt I was up for the task, so I ran. This was not something I wanted to make a career out of. It's not in my blood. I'm not a politico at heart, and quite honestly, I don't think I have the thick enough skin for it. So I've decided to focus on what's most important to me, and that's my family, my children, my career, and once December comes, I am leaving Stratford politics altogether. But, you know, with that said, I want to thank everybody that's been very supportive of me, that's been very supportive of everything I've been trying to do. I do feel that I have made a difference in District Two. I appreciate just all the correspondence with people, all the connections I've made, and, and I think it's been, it's been an interesting experience, but it's also been a very rewarding experience, and, and I'm happy I was able to do it and serve for at least a year on the town council. With that said now, just wanted to, to address one of the speakers, Mr. Perry, who came up here. But he's in the Perry family. He had left, he left after he spoke. Pretty much many of you weren't here when he spoke, but he, he spoke about how his family's been in Stratford for 130 years, and the amount of taxes he was paying on a couple of homes are being like in the excess of over $40,000.
Taxes.
He said $40,000 at one point, but-
That's what he had to earn.
I'm sorry, $40,000 he had to earn. But that's a lot of money to pay in taxes, and unfortunately, he let us know that he's closing on his house, and he's selling, and he's leaving Stratford, and he's not coming back. He's done altogether. He came here with all his tax bills. Unfortunately, that's the position a lot of people are in these days. Fortunately enough for him, he was able to sell his house and leave. But a lot of people are underwater and can't do that. I know for myself, I will quite honestly say right now to all of you, if I could put my house on the market today or yesterday, I would, and I would leave Stratford. The taxes are way too high, and a young family with three kids can't afford it anymore. And I would leave if I could, but my house is worth less than we owe on it. So I, I understand where people are coming from, a lot of these young families. I understand where a lot of the seniors are coming from, who are on fixed incomes, and they're on social security, and they're not making the money that they can get their medicine, their food, pay their taxes, pay their electric bills, and so on. So there's something we need to do here, and we need to lower taxes in this town, and we need to increase revenue. Unfortunately, neither's happening. And this is now going to be the narrative moving forward, is that people are going to be leaving here. I was chastised for saying that people will come to Stratford, you know, if our taxes are lower, if the revenue increases, we get better economic development, and if the schools are decent. I used the word decent, and I was chastised on social media and with people calling me saying, "How can you accept decent schools?" Or right now, I'm going to say, "Our schools are decent. Our schools aren't great, and no money you throw at those schools is going to help that." There needs to be a, just, just, from the top on down, these, this school system needs to be changed. If we want good schools, which I think as a parent, I want for my kids, we need to start at the top and work our way down. It's not cutting teachers, it's not cutting services, which is what was terribly threatened for months from our superintendent. That was wrong. We need to start with the superintendent. We need to start with the COO. This is where we need to start to make changes in Stratford when it comes to our schools, so our schools are not just decent, but our schools are good. We need to lower our taxes here in town, so people like me and my family and all the seniors that I get phone calls from saying, "Scott, what are you going to do because I can't afford to live here anymore?" We need to be able to keep the people that have invested their lives and invested their money and raised their families in this town, and we're not keeping them. They're leaving. They're trying to get out of here because they can't afford it. And their homes, when they sell them, the property value is so low that they're not getting their investment in return back on those homes. And yes, we're getting new families coming in. We're getting new families coming in, they're buying these homes a lot cheaper, but then they're going to be leaving too because they can't afford the taxes on them over time. You know, this economy all over the state is hurting. We need to do something here in Stratford to help our people and keep these taxes low and make sure our people have more money in their pocket at the end of the day. And for the amount of taxes we pay, I'm going to say it straight out right now, for the amount of taxes we pay, the services in this town are poor. Are absolutely poor. I commend the volunteers that went to Longbrook Park and cleaned that park. That is the job of our Public Works, and we're paying almost 40 mils in taxes, and that park looks like garbage. And I have been complaining for a year to Public Works about getting that park in order. There should be no reason those ponds are green, no reason those ponds are filled with bottles and garbage, no reason I, I walk around and pick up condom wrappers, cigarette butts, garbage all over the park this whole year I've been walking around doing it. I wasn't there this past Saturday, but let me tell you, I was there a lot this past year, and I did it. There's no reason that residents should be taking their Saturdays after paying high taxes to go take care of Longbrook Park. That is the job of our Public Works, that is the job of our mayor, and that is the job of this administration, and they better get their stuff in order quickly. So with that said, I do thank all the residents that care about this town and do want to make it better, and do want to make it a great place for them to live. Unfortunately, I feel done. I'm just going to flat out tell you all, I feel done. I tried hard, I did everything I could, and a lot of times when you're on the town council, people don't understand the amount of work you put in to this, to this position, and you're damned if you do, you're damned if you don't. But I always did my best, I led with integrity, I worked my butt off, I answered every constituent concern, even when the administration was not supporting me to get things done, as far as having to go to, having to threaten to go to News 12 to get a tree removed from a bus stop that was dying and limbs were falling. It took me four months to get it done, until I threatened to go to News 12. This is what I was up against as a councilman, and you know what? I'm not doing it for another two years. It was very stressful, it was very hard, and I had an administration that would not work with me at all. I hope, hope that this new council has an administration that works with them, that when there's constituent concerns, that those concerns are answered and not held off until there's a threat to go to in media, in News 12, because that's wrong. We're paying so much in taxes here that this administration should be jumping to please its residents. So with that said, I'm done. Thank you for your time, I appreciate you all being here, and, and I will be here for the next couple of months, serving you all. Thank you.
Mr. Kadeen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As always, when people come out, it's because they care, and I pray that the things that you have to say don't fall on deaf ears. Quite naturally, I was running late, so I did not hear anything you have to say, but pray that when you do come down, that the people do hear what you say. Prior to being on the council, I came down for so many years, and a lot of times it's just on deaf ears, so I pray that it can turn around, that it can be better. It's always necessary to be involved in your community. Since I've gotten here, since I first landed here from New York, I've always been involved. From the first time, my son's school was closing when I first got into town, Lord Church, and went out and fought to keep the school open. First time, I wasn't even here a year, and I started already trying to fight to keep things in line that should be normally there for you. And just speaking a little bit about the journey itself, from there, it just was everything. I was part of youth advisory board for like eight years. I've always been involved, the Southend Community Council, they had a Southend Community Council, I was on that for years. I've always been involved in my community, and I'm so thankful that it's an opportunity for us as United States citizens to be involved. I'm so thankful also to serve. And we just had a primary, a lot of people got over the hurt, and I thank God I was one of those people, and I thank all the people who came out and voted for me, and I pray that I continue to serve, because all I do is care. With all the things that are happening in the United States in general, I mean, there's so many things that are happening, from the fires that's right now in California, people being homeless, that was almost my situation. Thank God I was able to get back in my house at the beginning of August through the grace of God. I'm thankful for everyone who supported my family, and with their prayers and whatever donations they gave, I'm so thankful, I'm so thankful. And in that pain, see, I'm fortunate that I was able to go back to my house. So many people are not going to be able to go back to their homes in California, it's so sad, because there's so many memories and so much blood, sweat, and tears you put into your home. As a homeowner, you're different than a person who rent, because anything happens to your house, you've got to get it fixed. You can't get on the phone and call and say, "Hey, this doesn't work, that doesn't, that don't work like that." When you own your property, you pay a mortgage, something go wrong, you've got to get it fixed. So thank God I had good insurance, good people around me. But my heart goes out for all those people in Vegas who was part of a tragedy of a person, whatever they were going through, they just decided to hurt everyone else around them, and that's not the way to be. So God have mercy on all those people. Puerto Rico with the hurricanes, there's just so many things that are going on that are people being hurt, that I cry when I pray, and I pray constantly, because I recognize you have to stay connected to your Creator who gave you life, so that you can be aware of those around you who are suffering, and those who are around you who love you. So you need to stay constantly on your knees praying to your Lord. I'm so thankful that God is so merciful and kind to me. I mean, how many things we had since I've been here? I've been here almost 20 years, I think we just had Sandy, slight earthquake one year, I felt a little shake in the house, but we haven't had anything touch us like that, other than high taxes, so that's something we've got to work on. And also a better Board of Education, because the money that's allocated is not properly being done properly. I mean, it's all about management of your finances, and if you're not doing it right, you're doing it wrong. There's no in-between to this. Either you're above water or below water, you know, and that's how society is going these days. But I only pray for good things for all people, and I thank everyone who cares about the community, keep standing up, keep fighting. Prayer does work, prayer does work, and I just want to say thank you again, and I'm honored to serve, and I pray that I continue to serve. Take care, have a good night. God bless.
Mr. Herden?
Good evening. My prayers go out to all of those who were affected by the tragedies of this world as they continue to trouble us. It's exciting again to be here and to see the community out here speaking their thoughts and opinions on the behalf of the community. I would like to thank all the councilmen for all the hard work that they are doing and they continue to do until our ending day. Scott, I appreciate your honesty and your upfor-ness when it came to talking about the strive and all the hard work that went in place in order to be a council person. We know that this is a very difficult job. You have people who love you, you have people who hate you, and I have developed the tough skin for that, as Scott would say, it was, you've got to be, you've got to have tough skin. And so through these two years, I've done a lot of growing, and, you know, this was the first time ever jumping in, and I don't know how to swim, so I kind of jumped into a pool with no life preserver. And I've learned a lot from everyone in the community and the staff here in the town, and I'm excited about going a second term, and that will be my last term if and so I make it through November. I've enjoyed my time here also, and I just want to thank Neil Sherman and the Arts Commission and Committee for all their hard work. You know, there are some good things that come out of this town, and I know that we have a lot of bad things, but there was a saying that all the good things outweigh the bad things, if we can just look on it. You know, we do have this group of people, it doesn't matter what you do and how good you are, they will still speak nonsense upon your name. And so I always advise people, as my grandmother used to say, you just keep moving forward. And she used to say, "If you're going to hide behind something, you want to make sure it's big enough to hide you." So again, I appreciate everyone's hard work, I appreciate everyone coming out on a Tuesday night and listening to us babble, and keep the fight up, keep pushing forward in everything that you believe in, and hopefully this town will turn around in a better situation than what we're in now. Thank you.
Mr. Ken?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The folks that worked at Longbrook this week that Roger Saul spoke of, fantastic job, a great effort, I'm glad they were able to make that intervention and to solve some of the problems. On the Conservation Commission, I'm going to try to institutionalize, learn from what they did, and kind of write a how-to guide, so other members of other communities can clean other ponds and other parks in doing a way that's ecologically correct and safe and consistent with, you know, some of the rules that our Public Works and Conservation Commissions have. So that was a great example of public service, of a village stepping up and taking charge, and let's hope it can be replicated in other areas of the town. Thank you all.
Thank you. Mr. Young?
Yeah, it can be fairly quick, that's normal. I'd like to thank Mr. Jackal for his comments about the Short Beach, I think you guys have done a great job this year and accomplished quite a bit, so thank you very much for serving the town. Just a couple other people, and basically in overall things, touching a little bit on the Longbrook Park with Roger Pepper, leading this Saturday's effort to clean up Longbrook. As much as Public Works might be in charge of taking care of a lot of these things and stuff like that, it is stretched thin, it's not able to do some of the jobs that we wish to do, that we wish it could do. More importantly than that, when you look at an event that went on last Saturday, I look at Mr. Sales and see the pride that he took in the amount of people that came out and worked hard. I mean, we worked hard, we got a lot of done. It wasn't even as much of what we got done. I think that guy was about as happy as I've ever seen him for his community, and how excited he was to see people getting involved and doing something for their town that had nothing to do with anything other than the pride of their town. I think that's what's important. I've got people who have been moving into my street and surrounding streets who are buying second houses here, who live in New York, in the suburbs of New York, because they say the taxes are so much more expensive there. I do not disagree, taxes are too high in this town. I agree with that completely, and we can do a lot more better things than we have been doing. But it's not all doom and gloom. I think Stratford's a great town, I think it's got a lot to offer, and I think it's got a lot more to offer in the future. And I think that if a lot of people would concentrate on some of those things and look at the heart of this town, we're going to come out a lot better. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Antesa?
Madam Chairman? I have no comments to make about comments from the public because I wasn't here, but I must tell you where I was. I was at a demonstration, or a presentation I should say, at the Stratford Library, which is every Tuesday, and there will be two more of them, on healthy eating, which is also followed by a terrific cook who cooks something or makes something to eat right then and there. So if you haven't gone, it's quite interesting, and they cover all the facets of healthy eating. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chase.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Just would like to thank the folks that did come out and speak this morning, this afternoon, this evening rather, and I would just like to echo the remarks made by, by Mr. Young, and special kudos to, to Roger for the fantastic job you folks did down at the park. So thank you very much.
Mr. Llewellyn?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I'd also like to thank everyone for coming out, this being a Tuesday and not a Wednesday, Monday night as it usually are. Unfortunately, we did lose Mitzi tonight. Also wanted to thank Frank Pariday for sharing with me his candle glow stick from the domestic violence vigil that happened out front before, I kind of caught the middle to the tail end of it, but I thought it was very interesting that their presentation also included a male victim. Kind of reminded me back to the 90s when I saw that movie Disclosure, and that was kind of like the first time where I sort of started to gain awareness that, you know, men are also potentially can be victims of, you know, domestic violence and situations such as that. Wanted to thank my Short Beach Commissioner, Bob Jackal. It has been just a wonderful experience working with them over the last two years. We have been able to get a lot of things accomplished, and it's really been, you know, a bright spot for me to be able, to be able to work with them, you know, also see kind of what happens with Longbrook, where they were able, you know, this past Saturday, they did a one-day, one-day cleanup thing. And I think those are a fantastic opportunity. I wish they could be done on a regular basis, but unfortunately, I think it's the rules with some of the various, you know, Public Works, you know, unions or agencies don't allow that from happening. Back a few years ago, there were a bunch of volunteers who were tending to the Short Beach Golf Course greens, and there was actually a grievance filed by the Public Works people because they were doing too much, and the Public Works people actually ended up getting paid for work done by volunteers. So we kind of need to kind of catch, you know, catch a balance with the work that we do on our town parks, but I think it's a fantastic thing to do. I know that there's a lot of people who go down to Short Beach, put time in down there. I think that the caring is a fantastic buy-in by the community. I think people are then, you know, better maintenance of their own parks because they're vigilant and directly part of, of taking care of them. I know a lot of comments have been made kind of about the administration and about the support, and, you know, different people having different varying levels and abilities of getting things done. And so as I look at some of the ways, you know, I've been able to get things done, you know, I realize that prior to coming on to the council, I had done a fair amount of work in some other avenues. I'd been involved in a few PTAs, I'd done a few school construction projects, I was then on the zoning commission for a couple of years, and it really gave me, you know, the ability and an opportunity to leverage some relationships and use some of my prior advanced knowledge. I also- I also want to take an opportunity to thank Mark Dillon, who's been my administrative designated mentor. He has also been a fantastic advisor and helped me to guide things along, specifically some of the mobility mat work that happened down at Short Beach, along with Mr. Bandetti, who kind of oversees that development block grant project for the town. So again, that having been said, you know, looking forward to kind of working with everybody over these next two months. I believe six of the 10 of us won't be coming back, but we're not done yet. So let's get through our last rounds of committee and commission meetings and see what we can get done. Thank you.
Ms. Manis?
Hi, everybody. I want to thank everyone for coming out tonight and all the volunteer efforts of different folks that came up and spoke, Mr. Jakel, Mr. Stalls. The pictures are beautiful, and the things that are coming off the scout land are absolutely amazing. I also want to thank the mayor and his office for working cooperatively with the Hurricane Maria effort for Puerto Rico. That information was a surprise and kind of a neat thing to see the community come together to help build relief for some people in our community who are really passionate about home here and there and have family members that are currently without homes. And we'll be opening their homes to those people in the coming weeks as we embrace 1,000 children in Bridgeport and probably more in Stratford as well. So we are looking forward to opening our homes and our community to people who are This was a rough week. Vegas was tough. That was a tough thing to watch. When Pulse happened and I held the vigil, you know, tonight was booked. There was already a vigil here. It's not like, I feel like every council meeting, we've had some kind of national tragedy on our hands that we have been praying for, moments of silence for, or remembering. This has been a tough two years. I can't think of a council meeting where it was, nothing had happened. Outside tonight, they spoke about domestic violence. This is a personal issue in my family. And one of the things that Chief McNeil said is, you know, he sat with his daughters and said, "There's monsters in the world, and there's good people out there." Domestic violence doesn't know a socioeconomic status, it doesn't know college status, it doesn't know your family. It doesn't happen in unstable families. What it does is it destabilizes your family, from your parents to the people around you. It can make a very stable, loving home. Those forces that are part of this domestic violence can debase and destabilize an entire family network, to aunts, uncles, and sisters, and fathers, and everyone else. And I have a lot of compassion for those people who spoke today because you sit by the phone, waiting for the phone call of, you know, someone's dead, because you know that's where it's going. And if it doesn't happen today, tomorrow, and you hope people get help, but again, it doesn't know a socioeconomic status. It knows no boundaries. It is the strangest phenomenon, but it happens, and everybody knows somebody. Violence is all around us. I think that that's something we have to look at. I think the violence we commit against one another, the violence that our families have suffered as a result of being on the council, I give Scott a lot of credit because I know what it's like. You know, my father, my sister, my brother-in-law, like random acts, just people lashing out. And everybody can lash out, but your family is kind of off limits. I think that, I don't think that Stratford is alone in that. And I don't think it's all doom and gloom. But I think there's a lot going on in the world, and we can't deny it anymore. I think as Stratford is turning around, as somebody said, I don't think it needs to turn anywhere. I think it needs to look forward and open its eyes. And whether it's development, or whether it's Raymark, or whether it's AFCO, or whatever, take no prisoners and just kind of storm it. We have to continue working. All these events are really nice, and they make us feel good, but at the end of the day, there's really big things happening in the world that we need to take, sit up and take notice of. It's hard, it's hard to tell people to stay. "I want you to stay, Scott." You know, I want, I want people like Mr. Zaramac to stay. I know him. I know who he is. I don't visit his home all the time because he's not on my list, but I know exactly who he is. And that's all people want, when he stands up and says, "This is 130 years, my home." People just want home. And I get it. You just want home. And you want to take care of your family, and I think we need to take care of each other. But I want the people in District 10 to know that no matter what happens in our election, you're still my people. I was shocked when people came to the election and said, "I'm not your people, I'm a Republican." I said, "What? Like, you're all my people." And we had great conversations, and I think we need to see past a lot of stuff. But there's a lot going on in this town that no one wants to see. And you can see it in the red line districts. Look where the people live. Look where they live. Look how they live. Take a ride to a district you don't live in. Take a ride down those streets. You know, Mr. Kadim talks about sweeping the roads. I take that for granted. People come out with blowers and do it themselves. There's a lot we take for granted, and we have a very diverse community. And until we start to acknowledge it, Stratford will not rise. And what's happening in the world, I see happening here on our streets every day. So thank you very much for coming out and doing and continuing to be positive, but also let's acknowledge what's going on and make our town better and make us better as people. That's it. Thank you.
Okay. And I'd like to respond to some of the comments in the public forum. Ms. Zalik asked a few questions. She asked why we don't have a budget. And I've been very upfront about this in writing and at council meetings, so there's been no secret that the governor's executive order cuts about 10% of the town's budget. That would be coming from reimbursements, the cuts to reimbursements to the education cost-sharing formula that the town currently is entitled to. Actually, we're entitled to more, and he wants to cut 10% of the town's budget. Now, that doesn't mean that that's to education, because the way that our budget works is that we have a budget, we have a number for education, and in our budget are reimbursements to the town. So under the threat of 10% of the town's budget being cut, which is approximately four and a half mils, it would be nonsensical at this point to pass a budget that would be in fantasy land because it's all dependent on what the state does. Right now, we are operating under last year's budget. We had a number of meetings, and everybody knows that there wasn't tremendous agreement on this council to pass the budget. But right now, we're operating under last year's budget. The holdup, the one thing that could be detrimental to the town is that we, without passing a budget, we can't pass CEP or CIP. So I have asked the administration for an accounting of all the CEP and CIP money that's left over from previous years, and that's what we're operating under. So there's no secret about that. There's no secret, you know, like, why is there no budget? There's no budget right now because the state hasn't passed a budget. We had thought, as did everybody, that the state certainly wouldn't be going past October 1st without a budget, and now we are at October 10th without a state budget. So that, you also asked, why are there no motor vehicle bills? Well, last year, the state capped the motor vehicle mil rate at 32, and then they gave reimbursements to the towns that had mil rates, property mil rates above 32. If we put out a motor vehicle bill with 32, we will undoubtedly, the state, there are lots of talks of the state lifting that cap on the mil rate for motor vehicles. If we put out a mil rate, a tax bill for motor vehicles with a mil rate of 32, we will have to put out a supplemental tax bill. And that will be confusing for many people because that supplemental tax bill, depending on what sort of car you drive, I know we have an older car, that supplemental tax bill could be as little as $10. The collection rate on those supplemental bills are, is about 60%, which means 40% of the people would be liable to having liens put on their cars from the town because of non-payment of a very small tax bill. So the preference, and this doesn't affect a lot of towns in the state, but it does affect Stratford, is to wait, and the state has instructed the administration to wait until they pass a budget. So a lot of things are being held up because of what is going on in Hartford, and that's just the way things are. So I think you knew those answers already because I believe that's been communicated to you, but if you want to come and ask more questions that, you know, for political reasons, I know you're running for mayor, but if you want to come and ask more questions that, you know, where you already know the answer, you can do that again, but these are the, that's the answer to that. There were, Bob Jakel thanked people for the work on Short Beach. I am also very thankful to be on that commission. And I think that's it for, in terms of responses to, to the, direct responses to the public forum. Mr. Zarmach, he has two houses, as I understood it. The tax bill's totaled between everything, houses, two houses, I don't know how many motor vehicles he has, plus the WPCA was about $28,000, as he said. And that sounds about right, depending on the value of your houses. Okay. So the next thing is the mayor's report. Mr. Mayor, if you'd like to give a report?
First, I'd like to thank everyone that attended the domestic violence vigil, our sixth annual vigil. I'd like to thank that Greenwood Center for Justice for sponsoring the event with the town of Stratford. And I'd like to thank David Chojniewski also, who's been very helpful with issues of violence in our community. I think it's something that we're all aware of, that is now finally being talked about more. Certainly, there's more assistance to those that have been through domestic violence, whether it's physical, verbal, mental abuse, abuse towards children, spouses. It's unfortunate, it still happens in this day, but it does, and as we become more aware of it as a community, we embrace the issue, help protect those that are abused. I think it's very important. So I'd like to thank all the folks that showed up this evening who participated and also listened to the speakers to put an end to this matter. Also, at Longbrook Park, I heard some of the comments. I'm thankful that the volunteers have stepped up. As a community, it's always great when we get people together. I know on Operation Greensweep, we do the entire town, but it's actually invigorating to get together with your neighbors and friends and make a difference in the town. So I thank all those volunteers that came out at Longbrook Park and truly gave a good effort. And I did, Bill, I did see a picture of you with the weed whacker, and you were actually smiling, and I made me smile, but that's what it's all about, is neighbors helping each other and the community come together. So I hope that happens more, and I know it does. And, you know, I heard some negative comments today about our community, but I also heard some positive comments about our community. It's our community, and the level of involvement's up to you, whether you wish to participate or not, whether you want to volunteer, or how far you want to take it, or what ideas you have, but I think the participation part is important. And we all have areas of interest that we relish or love and like to get others involved, and I would encourage more of that to happen, whatever that may be about the town, whether it's in the south end or the north end or the middle of the town. We're a very distinct community, where you have very distinct neighborhoods. Thankfully, that's what makes us stronger as a community, but coming together is the most important. Anyone can criticize, but it's hard to give a compliment and acknowledge the positive. I thank those that are positive about it, and want to see us move in a positive light. I know that on, this Saturday coming up, October 14th, there's going to be a town-wide Hurricane Maria fundraising event. This is being run in conjunction with the Hispanic Heritage Community, actually, committee here in Stratford. I can tell you that my involvement with that committee has been great. They've expanded their event where it's more inclusive, more open, but it's bigger, and it's really a great day that they do once a year, and I thank the volunteers for that. It's another example of volunteerism, people getting together, rolling up their sleeves and doing hard work. But what we're going to do on October 14th, the volunteers, along with our police and fire departments, you have two officers in the back, thank you, officers for being here. Perhaps you will be out there in Barnum and Maine with the buckets, raising money for our friends in Puerto Rico and the Virgin Islands. But they're going to be collecting donations at the intersection of Barnum and Maine. This is going to be from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Donations will also be accepted at the town clerk's office, Stratford Library, Sterling House, police and fire departments. All proceeds will be accounted for, will be seized, and all the money will go to the American Red Cross. Volunteers will also be at some of our local retail establishments, so they're going to get the kids, the youth involved. So it's going to be all hands-on to help those devastated by Hurricane Maria. And I think as a town, it's important that, you know, as we have gone through some of our bad storms here, and they have been bad, I'm not going to trivialize them, but three feet of snow and some of the hurricanes, and when people lose power for five days, things get rather funky and things go upside down. But people start getting uptight and nervous. This situation that happened in Puerto Rico, as you know, I mean, they've lost, at the time, 100% power. Loved ones cannot communicate with their family members or friends for weeks. I mean, it was that serious. So any help that we can give them, we are focusing on extra monetary donations as opposed to supplies, so we'd rather give it to an acknowledged reputable organization like the American Red Cross so that it can make a difference. I know Bridgeport did this over a week ago, and they raised, I believe it was about $26,000. So we hope to do as well, if not more, but actually try to make a difference for the community. So if you're not doing anything on Saturday, October 14th, please stop by between 10:00 and 2:00. As far as the state budget's concerned, I have nothing to comment at this point. I am the eternal optimist. However, there is not a budget right now. As you know, the governor did veto a bipartisan budget. I would hope that that would create more synergy up at the Capitol where all parties can talk and come up with a reasonable solution to our current state budget crisis. On a good note, Stratford Town Hall has just been awarded the Energy Star, it's actually a pretty big deal, by the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency. Buildings that earn this award use 35% less energy and generate 35% fewer greenhouse gas emissions, and similar buildings across the city. Somebody may say, "What's the big deal?" It is actually a big deal, seeing that we do have this old building. So when people say, you know, "Can we find more efficiencies? How do we save money?" By getting this to work, but EBA, that's acknowledgement of how the town of Stratford is actually raising by this month. So hopefully, we'll continue to do that in the future. On October 21st, Booth Park will be hosting the annual pumpkin festival. This Thursday, we'll be also attending the groundbreaking for the construction of Two Roads New Brewery, which is going to be right next door. It's a $12 million investment in this community. This is a business that started here five years ago with seven employees. They now have over 103 employees, are in 14 states, including the District of Columbia and now the State of Colorado. So not only are they employing people in Stratford, and they're going to employ more people and pay more taxes, but it's also become a destination for people to come and visit, and it's actually kind of, actually put us on a map. I was on a flight to Texas a few weeks ago, and I had a Two Roads shirt on, and the steward said to me across the way, pushing the cart, he said, "Do you work for Two Roads?" I said, "No, I don't, but it's in my hometown." It's the best brewery in the United States. We were talking, he's had the product, but it's amazing how that facility, their name has spread across the country when people are talking about it out of state. So it's something you can be proud of. They've taken an old manufacturing facility, put it in production use, and have employed people. And they're also involved in the community. They just donated $5,000 to Stratford Point, where they have the butterflies, the butterfly garden. They want to get more involved in our community, so that's a good thing, so we should be proud of them. Stratford Army Engine Plant, I have no report at this time. The company is still doing research. With that, Madam Chair, I end my report.
Thank you. No appointments?
None at this time.
Okay. We'll move on to committee reports. The Arts Commission, during the meeting of September 13th, 2017, the following was referred to council. It's a request for town to purchase an Arts Commission miniature lighthouse to be placed on the green across from the Riverview Bistro with the sign, "Welcome to Stratford."
the sign, "Welcome to Stratford." Mr. Chase, I call on you for this.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Now that you've done the introduction, resolve, the request of the Arts Commission is acknowledged. Purchase of a miniature lighthouse B and is hereby approved in the amount up to, in an amount up to seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Okay, is there a second for that? Mr. Harden, seconds, discussion?
Excuse me, on the paper, it says six hundred and fifty. Did y'all change it?
No, that's for the next thing.
That's a different resolution, mister.
Okay. Thank you, thank you. But I don't, I don't see seven hundred and fifty nowhere on this paper.
No, he, he added that.
That's been added, yeah.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay, the motion is approved, ten to zero. Just so you know, tomorrow, there will be an auction of the lighthouses, so we have approved that they are authorized to bid on a lighthouse for the prices up to seven hundred and fifty dollars. We don't know if they will be successful in their bid, they could be outbid. So...
Madam Chairman, let me just add something to that.
Yes.
They believe that with the seven hundred and fifty, if the bid goes above that, they do have a benefactor that will help weigh the cost.
Okay, very good, that's good to know. The next thing on the agenda is to, that they would like six hundred and fifty dollars appropriated for PAL cartooning classes. This has done, been done in the past. Mr. Chase?
Yes, Madam Chairman, resolve that the request of the Arts Commission is acknowledged, and the appropriation of six hundred and fifty dollars for the PAL cartooning class B and is hereby approved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, seconded by Mr. Harden, all in discussion?
He said second.
I'm sorry, he raised his hand.
No, it, it was Mr., it was Mr.
I'm sorry?
I didn't hear him right next to my hand say not one word. I said second. I'm right here.
The chair saw, saw Mr. Harden.
But I said it.
Okay, discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes ten to zero. Booth Park Commission, during the meeting of September twentieth, the Booth Park Commission referred the following to town council with favorable recommendation, and is there a motion to table the purchase by the town of Stratford of personal property located at Booth Memorial Park from the trust of David B. Booth and Stephen N. Booth for one dollar?
Madam Chairman?
Motion to table that.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
I would move to table.
Okay, is there a second to table? Okay, all in favor of tabling, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Is there a motion to amend the agenda so the town attorney's office to continue its investigation on the inventory of this property?
So move, Madam Chairman?
Okay, is there a second to amend the agenda?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Harden. Okay, all in favor of amending the agenda?
Aye.
Okay, all opposed? Agenda is amended to add this.
Okay, Madam Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Chase?
The Booth Park Commission, by unanimous vote, approved the...
Actually, we have to have the resolution first, and then we'll have discussion.
Okay, I thought, I so moved the resolution.
Well, we have to say...
Which was, which is the following, sorry about that.
Is there, you want me to read it?
Yeah, I have it, I have it right here. Resolve that the town attorney's office continue its investigation to obtain an inventory of the personal property in question, and a better understanding of the anticipated income from the trusts, and report back to the town committee, excuse me, to the town council with its findings.
Is there a second on that?
Second.
Okay, okay, so discussion?
Yeah, Madam Chairman, the Booth Park Commission unanimously voted to accept the offer of transferring all of the artifacts at the museums to the town of Stratford. The trustees, which is in their, their authorization to do this, feeling was that if the town didn't want it, that they were going to take the value of the inventory that they estimate at eight hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars and sell the items. Obviously, we don't want to see that happen. These are major items that make up the, the exhibits at the, at the museums. But we want to know, before this is consummated, you know, exactly what this inventory looks like. We want to be able to ensure that the items will be protected once they're in the towns, once the town has authorization to take the good, take the items. And so, that is the reason why we're table, why we're tabling this, and I would move as that we give the amended resolution approval.
Okay, Ms. Maness?
Madam Chairman, I have a question regarding the items. Since they were in trust, I'm assuming at a bank, is that right?
That's correct.
Did they have a list of the items?
In nineteen, excuse me, in two thousand and eight, I believe it was, the trustees brought in an appraiser and did an inventory of the items. Now, at the same time, over the years, the Friends of Booth did their own inventory of what's in there in the various museums. So what they want to do is, one, they want to compare the lists to see, you know, what's missing, put it bluntly.
Ms. Maness?
I'm just curious, and maybe this is a question for the mayor, is, if we have the capacity to do this, because this has me nostalgic regarding the inventory in Shakespeare, and then the items, and where is the monkey lamp, and the this and the that. Do we have the capacity in our town to inventory all these items, then to take ownership of them, and to guarantee that those kind of rumors and conspiracy theories about people being, you know what I mean? I don't want to see this become another, another Shakespeare, with, oh, stuff's missing, things are in people's houses. Do we have the capacity to do that in town, really secure this stuff, or should it be in a vault when we find out?
You can't put, we're going to put all the items that are on exhibit at the museum in a vault?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chase, Mr. Chase, the question was from this man to the mayor.
I understand. Well, right now, there, well, right, listen, right now, most of those items in Shakespeare are locked behind a door.
The question is from this man to the mayor.
I don't want that to happen there.
Well, I don't take much, I don't listen to rumors in the window, I'm probably one of the few that don't. However, we are still, we are responsible for those items right now, so we have an issue right there. I think the best thing to do is take an inventory of what is there, so we know for a fact. What we are supposed to be responsible for, I would defer to the town attorneys and that as far as giving us some suggestions and, or perhaps as far as how to handle this material, but you're right, it is something I would handle carefully, it's an asset to the community. They should be on display, absolutely. My daughter even volunteered at the Booth House to do tours. Amy Page volunteered. But there's a lot of stuff up there that is very interesting and is worth some money, and I, we need to protect it. We are doing it right now, perhaps we can do it better, but it's been in trust and it hasn't been looked after, but it's something that, yeah, we should take very seriously, but we need to know exactly what we're going to be responsible for.
And we can do it.
Yes.
We have people who need it.
Yeah, we do.
But keep it the way it is, and take ownership of it, and turn this around.
Yes, and I also think that the other Booth Brother House, that's something else that we haven't done anything with, but there's potential there for more things to be happening up there, and I, that's going to take a significant investment, perhaps a big fundraising effort, but there's tremendous potential, there's a great park, we should support it.
I, I just, just in terms of process, I want to bring the council's attention to the memo that's from the town, from the Jackson Law Group, that's in your pony, it's dated July seventh, twenty sixteen, where they ask for more time, they ask to be authorized to continue its investigation for the inventory. We just want to make sure that when the town takes possession, we know exactly what we're taking possession of, so if anything walks away, we know what we're losing. We don't want to take possession thinking, you know, and people thinking that things walked away after the town took possession. So the last inventory was two thousand and nine, this would be two thousand seventeen, eighteen, and then, you know, once we have a handle on exactly what's there, then we can take possession and have it insured.
So we'll be insured.
Yeah, yeah, that's part of being a good steward for these things. Just to walk through on my part, yeah, I remember last year walking through one of the Booth Houses when they had the open house, and there's a wonderful basket collection that's, baskets over a hundred years old, and I know that those are very valuable. So my concern is, you know, can we be a good steward of these items and have the temperature control and everything that is required? Any other discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Okay, motion passes ten to zero. Okay, the next thing, I'm calling on Mr. Chase because he is on the Booth Park Commission. Mr. Chase? The upgrade of the amateur radio club shack with, this is all with no cost to the town, they want internet service installation for their facility based on the town engineering department's approval, that it meets with their specs and requirements as well as the town building officials' approval?
Resolve that the recommendation Booth Park Commission accepted, and the internet service installation for the amateur radio club shack as described above be and is hereby approved.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Chase, seconded by Mr. Llewellyn, discussion?
Yes, Madam Chairman, if it's okay with Mr. Chase, I would like to add a friendly amendment that, as part of the passage of this resolution, the council clerk notifies the building needs committee that this project is taking place. I have some prior experience on building needs committee where, at different times, accusations were made that the town was not properly providing oversight to project work and modifications that were being done up at Booth Park, so I'd like to see if this is properly tracked.
Okay. All, is there a second for the amendment?
Second.
Okay, all in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, the amendment passes ten to zero. Any more discussion on the item as amended?
Yeah, I just have one question, maybe it's the obvious question, but it's a ham radio shack. Why do they need the internet? Are they supposed to be independent radio operators, and the sole purpose of this club is to communicate by radio? Why would they need the internet? I'm just asking a question, I'm just screaming for an answer.
Get news flashes to answer.
Go ahead.
Information.
Because I got a busy...
I left that part of the meeting.
Yeah, but they're ham operators, they're independent.
The instructions.
It's a strong club, I think.
No, no.
They're valuable service, though.
So they've, they've desperately wanted internet service for a while, and one of the things that they do, just like, they have the, the emergency system that goes and all of that.
Sure.
It's part of that. So they want multiple modes to communicate, is how I under, how I understand it, and I have very limited understand, but the idea that they be communicating through radio, but if that isn't working, they be able to communicate through something else, they, you know, they want these multiple modes of communication when they do their programming and things like that. It's just to add to what they already have, and it's no cost.
Do they have Morse code now? I mean, can they communicate?
I don't know, but they, they do a lot, and that whole committee...
I'm concerned, because we need to know this, but it's like all modes.
Well, and they also, but they, they were also very concerned because during a storm, they want to make sure that it's, it's all working, because they are the emergency, you know? You know what I mean? They, they take on that role, I guess, in our town, where they will...
They do.
Send out the, you know, the blast, so they want to be prepared. So this is, they're very dedicated, that whole crew is really dedicated, and I have no idea sometimes what they're talking about, they're just, they're really into what they do, and I have to believe that if they're going to do this and they found a way to do it at no cost, it's only going to add and enhance their, their, their meeting and their event. You should, you should join.
Yeah.
All your spare time.
Maybe I will, my spare time.
Maybe we'll join together, maybe we can join together, it'll be great.
We can talk more.
Okay, we'd like to vote on the motion, which is that the recommendation of the Booth Park Commission is accepted, and the internet service installation for the amateur radio club shack as described above is hereby approved, and the building needs, and the building needs commi...
As amended.
And the building needs committee is informed of all of this work. Okay? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion passes ten to zero.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. The radio club has also asked for a HVAC system, and the replacement of the HVA system for their facility based on the town engineering department's approval, and meets with their specifications and requirements as well as the town's building officials' approval. Again, they're going to take the cost, handle the cost for this. Resolve the recommendation of the Booth Park Commission is accepted, and then the replacement of the HVAC system for the amateur radio club shack be as described above be and is hereby approved.
Okay, seconded by Ms. Maness, discussion? Okay, being nuns, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion passes ten to zero.
Madam Chairman?
Last item, yes.
The radio club needs a new front door. Replace the entry door due to poor condition and security issues, and that it will be the town's building maintenance responsibility. I would move that this be referred to the building needs committee, that's my motion.
Okay, okay, there's a second on that, is by Ms. Maness, discussion?
I have information on that.
Discussion? Okay, Ms. Maness?
So, the, the front door has been an issue for two years, there's, there's a problem with that door, they want to do something with, they were talking about even having, like, a system where you could get in and out without a key, there's a thing with the key, but the door itself is not, is, is in a good condition, and there are little critters that can get in and things, so it's very important that that door is secure, so that when they do all this work, HVAC, the HVAC stuff and the new fiber, fiber stuff that they can't, the squirrels can't get in, and the little mice or whatever, and eat it. So it's really, really, the, the door has to be done. Like, if we can get the door done for these folks, that would really be great, however we get it done, if it could not die in committee and get pushed through, so that they could then do their work, because they won't do it until the door's replaced.
Any other discussion being done, all in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed, motion passes ten to zero. Okay, next item on the agenda is from the EMS Funding Committee, I call on David Harden, who's the chair of that, to walk us through this.
The EMS Funding Committee conducted a meeting on September nineteenth, which the following was referred to the council with favorable recommendation. Request for fifteen thousand dollars from the Association Enterprise...
Fifty hundred.
I'm, I'm sorry, fifteen hundred.
Got it.
Yeah, I almost got it, yeah. From the Association Enterprise Fund for Education, Substaining Profession Standards, Professional Standards, Promoting Fellowship Among Members, and Serving the Community and Its Residents of Stratford. Resolve that the recommendation of the EMS Funding Committee is accepted, and that the request for the fifteen hundred dollars be hereby approved.
Second.
Okay, seconded by Mr. Chase, discussion? I'd actually like to call up Mr. Walberg, because I'm, this, one of these items came to us last year, and I'm just a little confused about how this EMS Funding Committee works, and why this is in front of the council. Does the town hold that money somehow?
No, I think this is from their, I think this is from their internal funds. My understanding is that they want to, they want to collect funds in order to sponsor...
And if I can let Mr. Harden interject?
I think, I was informed by Mr. Forster that it's in the charter that in order to get these funds, there just has to be approval of the movement of these funds, and that's just been the standard that it's been for the years. So the funds are there, and there just needs to be some approval by the council to move these funds.
So, I guess my question is, where are the funds being moved to?
Well, to be very honest, I've not...
From the association to...
I've not been approached.
I think from the association to EMS Association.
You go ahead, speak into the microphone.
I think it's probably coming from the EMS Association, maybe? EMS Association, and they're moving it from the EMS Association to EMS. EMS Association, and they're moving it from the EMS Association to EMS.
Again, I have to say I-
From the savings account, right.
I am not, maybe with this request. I'll be on it.
Oh.
Madam Chairman.
Have any question, anybody in this room have any knowledge?
Madam Chairman.
Okay, okay, so is there a motion to table this?
Aye, so moved we table.
Second.
Okay, second, all in favor of tabling, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion is tabled, that passes ten to zero. One of the town attorneys is going to be looking into this, we get a response that if this is resolved before the end of the meeting, we can deal with it tonight, otherwise it will have to be dealt with another time. Okay, Building Needs Committee, Building Needs Committee, who wants to walk us through this?
I'll take care of this.
Mr. Llewellyn.
Thank you.
Stratford High School.
So both Stratford High School subcommittee and the Building Needs Committee met last week on Thursday, the verbiage is listed in our agenda here on page three. Just to refresh people's memory, basically when the structural work was being final designed for the high school, there were almost two different structural criteria and two different soil criteria that were being used as a part of that. Turner went out to bid, all that work was sort of still in flux, there were some RFIs and questions that were asked by the contractors, and so, in one of the responses back to the question, it triggered a change order, and so I'm moving, based on the two prior recommendations, it be resolved that the Stratford Town Council approves Turner Construction COR 012 in the amount of thirty-three thousand five hundred and thirty-five dollars for the additional concrete and masonry starter course that are required at four mat slab locations, and the splicing of one column not previously addressed in the construction documents due to the elevation of the mat slab changing to accommodate the required anchor bolt coverage.
Okay, seconded by Mr. Chase, motion made by Mr. Llewellyn, discussion, Ms. Manis?
I just want to point out, I, this specific item, I happened to be at the Stratford High School when the footings changed, and I want to point out that Mr. Giuliano suggested that this changed then, and I, I hope that we're not going to be facing changes because of those changes as time goes on, over and over again, I want, is this because of those footing changes, is that's what's happening here? If Mr. Llewellyn could answer that, because that's what it seems like to me, should it have been changed then, what else needs to be changed?
Okay, so you are correct that, in kind of the story of what's related to that. It's important to note that from what Turner's reported to us so far, as they've done this question and answer and gone through the RFI process with their contractors, they haven't had to go backwards or kind of get paid to take anything away or do any work out of sequence. So I'm actually impressed that they were able to manage their way through both structural designs and finalize things, keep all the work in sequence, and I believe there have been a total of four changes to date so far, two of which were done on an allowance amount, and one of the ones that we approved on an allowance amount of two sixty-five, had a final cost of one eighty-five, and we ended up doing a sixty-five thousand dollar credit amount to zero it out. So, I mean, I don't know how they could have not done this work any better.
Okay, Mr. Cannon and Mr. Kadim, Mr. Cannon?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Project's complicated, let me round numbers, Alan, maybe a hundred and twenty million dollars, of which ten million is contingency in case of overruns?
Give, yeah, give or take.
Give or take. So I missed the vote at the last council meeting, but one of my asks has been, you know, also having run multi-year projects that, you know, have large financial complications and ramifications, that if you do have a contingency or some pad in your timeline, that you want to know as early as possible if you're at risk at exceeding your budget or at exceeding your timeline. So with each of these change orders, some of them may be part of the base project cost, or some may be eating into that contingency. So what I was hoping from building needs or the high school committee is for everything that's been done to date and then going forward, if there is a contingency, how much of that has been used versus the percentage of the overall project?
Okay, so at present time, both within the GMP and within the funds that the town controls under the current bonding, there are multiple contingencies. And so what'll happen moving forward, the building needs committee got their first one last month, but Turner's going to do a monthly report dashboard, and one of the things that it does track within it is contingency spending. So you will see monies within the GMP and that the GMP itself is being maintained, and then in the coming months, we'll also see on a monthly basis any related contingency activity. At present time, Turner has a construction contingency within their GMP, the project has four point five million in savings from before the GMP was finalized, there's a design contingency, and there's an owner contingency. So I don't want to end up shooting myself in the foot three years from now, but at current time, the project is doing very well with its available funds within the overall bonded amount.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Kadim?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Is this, we was in a meeting where they dug under soil and found the problem, where they had to dig even more or clean out even more, is this part of that adjustment?
No, this is, this is a different, different item.
Just want to make sure, thank you very much.
Okay, sir, any more discussion on this item? Being none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion passes ten to zero. We're into the town attorney's report.
Madam Chairman, if I may begin the report regarding items five point two point three, the EMS Funding Committee item, that does not require action by this body, under section eighty-eight dash six of the code, the committee has the authority to make that appropriation directly.
I'm sorry, I'm having trouble hearing you, let alone everybody else.
Under section five point two point, I'm sorry, under item five point two point three of your agenda, the EMS Funding Committee request?
Mm-hmm.
That should not be before this body, because under section eighty-eight dash six of the town code, the committee already has the sole authority to make that appropriation, it does not require action by this body.
So in the future, all of those appropriations from the EMS Funding Committee, those can be made from the, by the EMS Funding Committee itself, it does not go to town council?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you very much for that clarification.
Make a motion to strike it from the agenda?
Well, actually, we first need to amend the agenda to do that. Is there a motion to amend the agenda?
Motion to amend the agenda?
Is there a motion, is there a motion to take this, to take the-
It's so moved.
I'm sorry, is there a motion to take five point two point three out of order?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second? All in favor of taking five point two point three out of order, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that passes ten to zero. Is there a motion to strike item five point two point three?
Motion to strike.
Okay, made by Mr. Farrington Posner, seconded by Mr. Kadim, all in favor of striking item five point two point three, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion passes ten to zero. Okay, now, Mr. Town Attorney?
Thank you, I just have a brief report. I'd like to report on a lawsuit that had been filed against the town by some retirees from the fire department, they were seeking enhanced pension benefits, the case had been in suit for about a year, and we were able to show the attorney representing these retirees that the case had no merit, that the state labor board had already ruled on the issue that these retirees could not get any increases to their pension, and the attorney withdrew the suit. So it was a really nice result, and good job by Ron Eng in connection with that case. And that concludes my report.
That's it?
Yes, that is it.
Okay, are there any questions to the town attorney?
Madam Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Chase?
Yeah, to any of our attorneys in the front of us, this council will cease to exist in December.
Can you use the microphone, Mr. Chase?
I'm sorry, this council will cease to exist in December. My question is, items that are left on the agenda or on any agenda for any committee, such as ordinance, do those items disappear? So, because I recall the, our first meeting, we were handed an agenda with all of these items, and frankly, none of us knew what they were.
They disappear with the end of this body's term.
So the first agenda that's put together by the new council will include anything that's left on our agenda?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any other questions to the town attorney? Okay, let's move on. Are there any questions to the mayor or staff? Okay, Ms. Zantezo?
Yes. Mr. Mayor, I noticed that they announced the dredging, I believe, of the mouth of the Housetonic is finally going to be done. Is that anything in connection with the AVCO dredging at all?
I'm sorry?
It was announced that they're going to start a project to dredge the mouth of the Housetonic. My question is, does that have anything to do with the AVCO dredging?
I'm sorry, I'm having trouble with the-
AVCO?
Oh, no, not at all.
AVCO, Army Engine Plant.
No, 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 not at all, that, this is actually, it's upriver also, but it goes down the channel to the mouth, it's about three hundred thousand cubic yards, which they're going to take that material and actually use it for sand replenishment at Hammond Asset State Park. That has nothing to do with the Army Engine Plant.
Okay.
The area of concern at the Army Engine Plant is the actual mud flats, changes beyond the facility, and at low tide you can actually-
Is it upstream?
I'm sorry?
Is it upstream from-
No, no, it's right, it's adjacent to the Army Engine Plant and the river, and at low tide you can see the mud flats, but what they're dredging is actually upriver, going down the actual channel, they're going to-
Oh, okay.
I believe it's eighteen feet they're going to dredge down to, so that's, that's a big project, by the way, but it's going to benefit not only the town of Stratford but the city of Milford.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, Ms. Manis?
Hi, so a question came up yesterday, and I looked into it and found some information, but we belong to the Connecticut Conference of Mississippianities, right? We've had discussions about this before. The question of the CERMA insurance, the riders that come for, what is it, workman's comp or the other riders, found out that someone had a question, they said, is, is the Connecticut Conference providing CERMA insurance? I looked into it, and Connecticut, Stratford doesn't participate, so we don't participate in CERMA. So the membership went from sixteen thousand dollars last year, and it's marked as like thirty-two this year. And the question then is, so we know we get the trainings and stuff for it, but what is the benefit for us belonging to this? Because now they're part of this whole budget thing happening at the state, and they're becoming very political, so the question becomes is, what are we getting for that thirty-two thousand dollars? We're not funding other things like in town-
Right.
-so that we can continue that membership.
Well, you know, it's a good question, and CCM does offer a lot of services. When I first took office eight years ago, we dropped our membership, and, you know, part of it was that I was actively involved in the legislature, I knew what was going on, I knew how to, I knew the issues, and as time went on, CCM kept approaching us, trying to rejoin and rejoin, and we held off, and, you know, I guess people have varying opinions about the effectiveness of CCM and the services they offer, but they ended up approaching us again, and they do offer some things such as research that are valuable, that they help with a number of different departments as far as recommendations and guidelines, and of course, the insurance aspect of it, so they, some towns are more involved with it than we are. It has been helpful at times, I'll be honest with you, to be a member of CCM. So what happened was, they finally approached us, and we ended up getting, I mean, the deal was, we held out the longest time, is they gave us six months for free, a year at half price, and then the next year at full price, so we really, I mean, coming back in again, we got a great deal, and it was valuable to us. Mr. Timniak, would you like to comment on it?
I would just like to add, we do a lot of employee training there, so department heads go, that training we would have to pay for independently in the departments, so CCM offers it as part of our membership package, so we send employees there, HR does it, there's lots of seminars, we, yes, we attend a lot of seminars, and as members, we don't have to pay the fee to actually show up per, you know, to do that, so.
So I was a critic in the beginning, and I didn't see the value initially, and when I got in, we had a deficit, so we were looking to cut things, and that was something we cut, but over time, I saw more value in it, and, you know, regardless of the political things that are going on, as a resource, we found it to be helpful.
Thanks.
Sure.
Okay, Mr. Farrington Posner?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mayor Harkins, good evening, how are you?
Doing great.
Earlier tonight, I actually have a question for either you or Mr. Timniak or Mr. Wahlberg, earlier tonight, former coun-
Is it, do I live in Shelton, is that your question this evening?
Do you live in Shelton?
No, I live in Stratford, always live in-
Okay, so I do too, but I've been, said I don't live in Stratford anymore either, so, anyway.
Good for you.
No, my question, former councilwoman Sandra Zalik came up tonight, and she asked how much was in our reserve funds and what our bond rating currently is, so if we can get an answer to that question from either you or your staff, I'd appreciate it.
Do you want it right now?
Yes, please.
Hang on, let me, staff? Jay, are you there? We need to know our bond rating and our fund reserve. Actually, our bond rating, what it is today, not what it may be.
Scott, the question was, what our bond rating is currently?
Yes.
Right now, with Moody's, it's A-plus, with San Antonio's, it's double A. We are on a negative watch because of the state budget, and the way they, right now, they cut our, our, our school funding by twenty-one million dollars. I sincerely believe that will be restored, but as it stands now, that's our rating. Our fund balance, our fund balance, I believe, okay, is around five million dollars, which is probably about three or four percent of our, of our current budget. Normally, the rating agencies would like to see it at ten percent, and that's basically it.
Thank you, Jay.
This year here, I can tell you, the preliminary figures coming from our auditors, we're just about flat, we may have tapped our fund balance for something under half a million dollars, but for the most part, it's kind of broke out even.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, Jay, you're a good man.
Okay, Mr. Kadim, did you have a question?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. How are you, Your Honor?
I'm doing well.
Always good to see you. First, before I even ask any request for anything, I would like to commend you and Mr. Timniak, as well as Mr. Bandeki, for all the hard work you guys have been doing with Public Works and all the things you've got done that I've asked you to get done, so thank you so very much.
Thank you.
So I don't want to start off by asking for anything, I want to first-
It's been a pleasure and an honor to help, believe me.
Thank you so much, because, you know, most towns, we come up here and we always, could you do this, could you do that, everything is wrong, but no, and everything is not wrong, just a couple of little items, if it's okay, I'd like to speak to you about. My constituents knock on the door, firstly, just recently, somebody, and I sent this to Mr. Timniak, put a sign on my door, because I live 196 Larkin Court, when they're going to sweep the streets, so I have to say thank you guys for coming to sweep the streets, that's the first thing, and it was done, I'm so happy that it was done, because I get all kinds of things, because I live there, they come right to me. On, there's a dead tree on Wooster between Yarwood and McGrath, I spoke with Mr. Timniak about it, if you remember, on the left-hand side, no leaves on, nothing on it, they've been asking to get that down for a little while, it's possible we can get on that as soon as possible.
Sure.
Mr. Bandeki, we spoke about sidewalks, we've got a lot of work done in the fifth district, which is very nice, but the third district needs some attention. On Wooden Road, I spoke about a gentleman who has a house on the corner of Wooden and Shanley.
Right.
He is cracked up because of the tree situation, one time they came and put a cherry picker in and cracked it.
Okay.
And I hope that you guys can get out there and get that done.
I have a question regarding that, is that his tree or our tree?
That was, in fact, that's our tree, because what happened is, we also, that same tree that was there just fell down, they just tore it out like last week.
Okay.
But this was done years ago, this wasn't recently with the tree coming down, this sidewalk was broke, it was right, it's most, it leads right into Wooden, it's on Wooden, but the corner is Shanley, what did I say that right, yeah, Shanley and Wooden, but it's Wooden.
Shanley and Wooden Road.
Correct.
All right.
And then on Larkin Court 206, gentleman lived right next to me, was asking about the sidewalk being like damaged so bad, they wondered when they're going to put it back, so this has been like that for years, I would say over ten years it's been like that, but the money is there in the CBG grant to get that straightened out, hopefully we can get that, 206 Wooden, I mean, Larkin Court.
Okay. Okay.
And also, in front of, right as that turn comes, you know, because they redid the driveways and so forth, but I don't know what happened, why they didn't put that sidewalk back. I don't know. But like I said, I know the money's there. We worked hard to get it there, and I thank God for that. And also, right in front of my place, 196, is the same thing. The sidewalk is damaged also there as well.
Okay.
So, if it's possible that can be addressed, I greatly appreciate it. Any questions, feel free to call me. You know, I'm there.
Thank you, Councilman Kadim.
Thank you so very, very much for all you do. I'm going to miss you when you leave, brother. All right, God bless.
I wish you luck in the future.
Thank you. Thank you so much. You too. You too, definitely.
Okay, any other questions for mayor or staff? Okay, I have a couple. In our September meeting, we heard a very pessimistic timeline about the Stratford Army Engine Plant project. Very pessimistic. And it wasn't the news any of us wanted to hear. Is there, you know, people have asked me, "Well, why don't we develop part of the Stratford Army Engine Plant that doesn't involve the mud flats?" And I know that the developer had plans for the whole thing, but is there none of it that we can act on between now and, I think it was three or four years from now?
No.
Yeah, explain that, please, though.
Because I know it's not going to be an acceptable answer. So, the Army would like to transfer the entire property, as opposed to just doing it piecemeal. I'm not saying that can't change in the future. I know that the developer is actively involved in trying to move the project and also looking at different options as far as how to expedite the entire process. One can question the process that's being currently applied by the Army Corps of Engineers, that it may not be applicable to this particular site, seeing that it's regulated by the state of Connecticut. With that all being said, there's nothing more the developer would like to do than start taking some of those buildings down and start doing exactly what you said, because it seems like the most practical thing to do, to get some development. But that's where we are. The Army would like to transfer the entire property, be done with it, as opposed to doing it piecemeal. That has been asked, and...
And that's been the answer? Okay. Okay, and then the other question, there was a lot of competition for the Amazon second headquarters, and there was some talk of us being, Stratford being involved in that. What is our involvement there right now?
The...
And I know that the state has its preferred city.
They do. So, what happened was, we were involved in a conference call with the state of Connecticut. It was DECD and other municipalities throughout the state. I know the city of Danbury sent their own ad in to Amazon. The region, however, decided to do something collaboratively with New Haven and Bridgeport and Fairfield, which included Stratford, to identify sites that we believed had potential for development. So, that happened throughout the state, and the state decided not to make us part of their RFP going to Amazon. But we did attend a meeting. We were working with the region and trying to promote our area. And the state of Connecticut decided not to submit our request.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay. We're now on section seven. There are items 7.1, 7.2. If there are any of these that you want to take off the table, please shout out or tell me. 7.1.1 is the cost of Dog Park that's on the table. 7.2.1 is the CEP/CIP ordinances. They cannot be, we cannot act on them. Mr. Khan?
I apologize, Chair. Are we speaking about removing them from the table?
Yes.
I'd recommend that we would remove 7.2.1.
Okay, that, okay, is there a second to remove 7.2.1, knowing that we can't act on that because we haven't passed a budget?
Yes, that's the motion. It would save a lot of paper until we finally get to the point where we know what, meaning all the paper that's printed in the back?
I'm sorry. 7.2.1 is currently on the table. Do you want to remove that from the table?
I apologize for not stating it clearly the first time. Yes.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, seconded by Mr. Farrington Posner. Would you like to make a motion?
Motion is to remove 7.2.1.
To strike it?
To strike it. I apologize.
Second.
Okay, do we, can we have discussion on striking?
Pardon me, what are we striking?
Striking is removing it from the agenda, but we will be coming back to this after we pass a budget, as the state passes their budget.
Madam Chair, there's a motion on the, point of order. There's a motion on the floor to take this off the table. It was seconded by Mr. Posner.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Right? You can't change it until we vote.
Okay, I thought we took it off the table. I didn't vote on that? I'm sorry. All in favor of taking this off the table, say aye.
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 No.
Okay, all opposed, say no.
No.
I'm doing a roll call.
Madam Chair, roll call.
Mr. Farrington Posner?
Yes.
You want to take it off the table, Mr. Kadim?
No.
Okay, Mr. Harden?
No.
Mr. Khan?
Yes.
No.
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 And I, the chair votes no. The motion fails eight to two. Okay, that is still on the table, then.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to just ask a question regarding this whole thing, to clarify something in my own mind. Is it true that we cannot pass, which essentially is a bonding-type thing, until we have a clarified budget? Is that why that has been, the CIP/CEP are there?
We have been told multiple times that the town cannot go out to bond because we have not, until we have a budget pass.
Okay, even though we're functioning with last year's budget?
Even though we're, as far as I know, even though we're functioning with last year's budget, yes.
So, all right, so, taking it off the table is irrelevant. Thank you.
Okay, 7.2...
Can I ask a point of clarification?
Okay.
To continue.
Ms. Manis?
The leases that are for the vehicles and all of that is included, though, in the CEP, in the first pages of the CEP. Will those things continue, even though they're part of the CEP, because they're considered contractual obligations? All those police cars and things like that?
That's a good question. Mr. Timiak?
I don't, you know, all of a sudden, everybody loses their car. You know, they're emergency people.
Yes, those are continuing.
Those continue, even though they're part of the CEP and the CIP?
Yes.
Okay.
They're part of the match, though.
Yeah, that...
They're part of the townside match.
Right. And then, the second question I have is that the chair had brought up, we're looking into the CEP, or the CIPs from previous years, to see where money is left. Because once it's bonded for something, you can't use it for anything else, right?
Some things are...
So, right, well, we have, can the council, can you send us all a breakdown of that? So, for example, like Roosevelt Forest has wanted to take down that ranger station for years. Now, it's gone, right?
Right.
But we just found out, when we wanted to do the Dog Park, that there was money there. So, when that report comes out, could we just see that for posterity and be able to pass it on to whomever's here?
Absolutely. I've been working with the finance director on a comprehensive list of all of our bonding right now.
That's great.
So, I'd be happy, more than happy to share.
And we will be able to use that if we need to. Like, if there's an emergencies...
That was my question.
Madam?
And I've asked for that list. It's been a while, and it's a hard list to put together, because it's going back, it's way, going way back.
We can still use it. We can use it, even though we're not in a current, a new budget, because it was already bonded money.
I believe it depends on the item, and so, that was part of the assignment, to figure out what's fungible and what isn't.
Thank you.
Madam Chairman?
Yes, Ms. Antezzo?
Even though, and there's a listing in the back of all the CEP/CIP items, anything pertaining to the WPCA actually is funded not from bonding, but from our WPCA funds.
That would be a discussion if we were actually passing the CIP/CIP. Right now, we're a little off-agenda. So, if there are any more questions on this, we should amend the agenda. The next item was the Seventh Center School Resolution. That's been on the table. That's 7.2.2. This one is 7.2.3, which is a FEMA grant, which was tabled during the meeting of September 11th. Is there a motion to take that off the table, 7.2.3?
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
I would move that we take 7.2.3 FEMA grant off the table. Second.
Okay, seconded by Ms. Antezzo. All in favor of taking this off the table, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, that motion passes 10 to zero. It's now off the table.
Madam Chairman, question to maybe Mr. Timiak regarding this grant?
I'm sorry, can we have the resolution first and then have the discussion?
Sure. Sponsored by, I assume, the town council, Madam Chairman. Whereas the Federal Emergency Management Agency, U.S. Department of Homeland Security, is authorized to extend financial assistance to municipalities in the form of grants, and has made funds available to the town through the 2017 Port Security Grant Program, in the amount equal to $11,250. And whereas funds under this grant will be used to purchase an all-terrain vehicle, ATV, and whereas there is a mandatory cost share of 25% of the total project cost, equal to $3,750. And whereas it is both desirable and in the public interest that the town of Stratford execute a grant agreement with the Federal Emergency Management Agency, FEMA, U.S. Department of Homeland Security, to accept funding in connection with this project. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Stratford Town Council. One, that it is cognizant of the town of Stratford grant application to contract with the Federal Emergency Management Agency, U.S. Department of Homeland Security, to accept funds in the amount of $11,200, and that it hereby authorizes, directs, and empowers the mayor, John A. Harkins, or his designee, to execute and deliver such application in the name and on behalf of the town of Stratford, any and all applications and/or agreements, including amendments to or rescission of such agreement, and any and all related documents necessary to apply and obtain funding from the Federal Emergency Management Agency, U.S. Department of Homeland Security Port Security Grant.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Manis.
Madam Chairman.
Okay, now, discussion.
Madam Chairman, to Mr. Timiak, or anyone on the administration that can address this.
Could I have, I'd like to make a comment, if I may?
Yes, will you let Mr. Mayor make his comment?
So, this grant came up as, it's almost a third-tier request that was made. We were rejected for the first request for support and other activities the fire department does. When this came across my desk, and I saw this, I mean, right now, given the state of the economy and the state of the town, and we're all concerned about money, I don't view this as being a priority right now for our fire department, given all the other equipment that needs to be funded. And I believe that by tabling this last month, that we may have missed a timeline to even qualify for this grant. So, I think we had to take this up at the last meeting to actually vote on it, to get the money. So, I don't, number one, I don't think the monies are available anymore. And number two, I don't think we can really justify having an ATV. It's not just the ATV, it's, we have to transport it there.
You're stealing all my thunder, Mr. Mayor.
I know, yeah. I didn't mean to. I'm sorry. Mr. Timiak, would you like to ask me any questions?
It's fine.
Did you have a question?
Mr. Timiak, the mayor has answered my questions.
Okay.
We're minds think alike.
Is there a motion to strike this?
Motion to strike.
No, oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. No, no, I...
I didn't know.
Ms. Manis, you still wanted to discuss?
I wanted to share thoughts on this. This looks like it's just an ATV. I've had discussions with fire about this. This is a vehicle that would go through and look for, like, nuclear weapons and all kinds of fancy bells and whistles, that the ATV that we currently have, we own one, with EMS, it does something completely different. So, this is a specifically functioning one. Another thing is, that's very concerning to me, is that if you reject money from the federal government, you never get it again. So, we were given something, and we're going to give it back. So, I think that there's a concern also among folks in fire that worked on this, that if we, if we reject it and we don't do it, that when, we already got rejected on the first things for the maintenance of those other things that we have, the fire boat, I think, and other stuff.
Yeah, the dive team.
And the dive team. We got rejected on all that. This was the one thing we got. They worked really hard on it.
It wasn't the one thing we got.
Well, this was what they got. And if they say no, that next time they go to ask at the well, the well won't give them anything.
First of all, I have heard, the only person I spoke to is from the chief, and rank and file have not spoken to me about an ATV. I'm telling you right now that the amount of equipment and support we've given to the fire department has been a priority and is very important to everyone here. This, however, I don't believe is a priority at this time. And I would say that by us not acting on this right now, given the state of the state and the state of the economy and the state of the town, it would be fine. It's a small grant. We were rejected for a couple others that we viewed as a priority, and we have received other, Mr. Timiak, would you like to respond?
So, FEMA basically said, "We're going to give Stratford a pool of money." Our number-one priority was what we approved last time, filling the tanks, right? So, we got the compressor to do that. And they basically said, "What's left in that?" So, number two, number three, were too expensive to put all together in the package. Number four on the list was the ATV. So, it was, I think, the fourth tier of the items we list to have, be put in place. So, we got, last week, from, last month, from FEMA, we got the big-ticket item, which we're thrilled about, and we accepted it.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
I'd move the question?
All in, okay, is there a second to move the question?
Second.
All in favor of moving the question, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed to moving the question, say no.
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 One, two, three no's? One, two, three no's, is that what, four no's? Okay, then we were-
Roll call.
Roll call for moving a question? I think I heard four no's, is that correct? I heard Tina, Scott, Wally, and Ms. Antezo. Any, did I miss anybody? Okay, the motion to move the question, uh, fails, I mean, the motion passes, I'm sorry. All in favor of this, say aye.
Motion is to move to strike.
I'm sorry?
The motion is to move to strike.
Oh, the motion is to move to strike, all in favor of striking? Wait, who made the motion to strike?
We never got to it.
No, we never got to it.
The motion, and then we took it off the table, we were in discussion.
There's a motion to-
And now we moved the question.
Now you've moved the question.
I move we strike.
Well, no, the, uh, Brian, can we strike right now?
Sure.
Moving, okay, motion, is there's a motion to strike, is there a second?
Yeah.
Is there a second to strike?
Is there a second to strike?
Okay, seconded by Mr. Llewellyn, all in favor of striking, say aye.
Aye.
No.
Okay, roll call, Mr. Farrington Posner?
No.
To strike. Mr. Kadim?
No.
Yes.
Mr. Khan?
Yes.
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 No.
And the Chair votes yes, the motion passes seven to three. Okay, so that's now struck. Uh, there are some tabled appointments, I'm going to keep those on the table unless there's something pressing. Okay, then now we're into ordinances and resolutions. Uh, number eight, ordinances and resolutions, this, this ordinance is for us to join a lawsuit which the Connecticut Education Association, uh, the CEA will represent the City of Stratford in legal action, seeking a temporary and permanent injunction or other legal decision against Daniel Malloy and his capacity as Governor of the State of Connecticut and CEO of the State of Connecticut. Then, that, the subject matter of said litigation is the education cost sharing grants set forth in Connecticut general statutes, specifically that in derogation of these statutes, Governor Malloy has exceeded his authority in ordering reductions in ECS funding to the Town of Stratford and other similarly situated towns and municipalities pursuant to executive order, that the aforementioned representation will be without any cost whatsoever to the Town of Stratford. Now therefore be resolved that the Town of Stratford, acting through its duly-elected council members, does hereby agree to be a party in the litigation described above, and does grant permission for the CEA to represent the Town of Stratford as a party in the foregoing litigation.
So, move.
Okay.
Take him.
Motion-
Second.
-made by Ms. Manus? I'm sorry?
We need a second.
Seconded?
I'm not seconding it, no.
Second.
Okay, there's a second?
Madam Chairman, discussion.
Discussion.
Couple of questions, who wrote this?
I don't know.
Who wrote this? Who put this verbiage together?
This is from the Connecticut Education Association.
That's CEA?
Yeah.
Connecticut Education?
Yes.
Okay, just want to be clear, this needs to be amended. Uh, I'm looking at line two, "We are the Town of Stratford, we are not the City of Stratford."
That was a typo by the CEA.
Right, right.
But yes, that's-
Connecticut Education, right, got it.
Good one.
The, uh, the entire document they sent had the word city in there, and we worked to-
So, I would move that we amend this to change the word city to town.
Okay, there's a second for the, second to change the word city to town in this resolution, all in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, that passes 10 to zero.
Okay, I was in Two Roads Brewery, and I was in the area, we buy t-shirts, and I have a t-shirt now that says Strat City, um, I just want to make you aware of that.
Yeah, and I assume, I assume you've, I assume you've spoken to the-
I will on Thursday, I'll mention it.
I heard they're gonna sell them in the second district.
Getting back, getting back to this, uh, any other discussion on this?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Ms. Manus?
Um, I think that this, this is a very public lawsuit, um, a lot of towns are joining in this, and I think that it's a proactive step. I'm glad that we aren't just posturing about this, and we're actually taking action. The money that was cut from our, from our ECS funding is unfair, and it's mean, uh, and it was done, and it's not being done in a mean spirit, I believe. I understand that there's no money at the state, but to, to hit Stratford in this way isn't really fair. You know, you could, maybe a couple million dollars you could play, but I really believe politics is being played here, and I think that we need to support our teachers, I think CEA coming out, they're usually pretty quiet, them coming out on this and us joining forces with them is a real positive step in the right direction, to get the things that were put in the judgment that we were supposed to have coming to us anyway. This is, we've been down this road already.